Our Father, who art in heaven, is the body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for all.
Please remain standing if you will. This past Saturday, we lost a valuable member of our community who was a cheerleader for Norwood and represented everything that she got out of Norwood and wanted to give it back to the next generation of people in Norwood. And I'm speaking about Dr. Kathy Sabo, our Norwood City School Superintendent. How you go from you're cancer-free to hospice in four weeks is incredible to me, but she will be sorely missed. And I ask that everyone just have a moment of silence in her memory. And if you pray, to offer prayers for her and her family. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Sankar.
Here.
Mr. Brayden.
Here.
We do have six members present. We have two requests to amend the agenda. The first is to add a communication, number two, a letter from Kelly Brown regarding September financials. And under introductory readings of ordinances and resolutions, a resolution regarding the setting the hours for Halloween. So that would be number two, J2. Mr. Thompson.
Will we amend the agenda?
Seconded by Mr. Brayden, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Hannah Hand.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to the minutes of the previous meeting. We have the minutes of September 24th, 2019. The updated minutes with the corrections were emailed to you, so we are considering the second version that was emailed out to you. And I thank Mr. Gears for making that correction and getting those out so promptly. Thank you. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we approve the minutes as of Friday.
Seconded by Mrs. Hannah Hand, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Hannah Hand.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We do have a request to address council, but it is not on an agenda item, so we'll take that up a little later on. Our next item on the agenda then is introductory readings of ordinances and resolutions. The first is a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we have all three readings of the resolution.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzel.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So as scary as the title might be, if we're not creating any new tax levies, this essentially is just the county auditor letting us know how much the levies that are on the ballot are. Some of them are authorized just by code, and some of them are things that the voters have authorized that are above the limit that we have. So it's just essentially saying, letting us know how much it's going to be. It's a very standard thing. We do this every year, so you know, it's, no controversy should be through this process.
If we want to get our money, we pass this resolution, basically.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to suspend the rolls and have all three readings. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Hannah Hand.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we pass the resolution.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Hannah Hand.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a resolution declaring it to be the desire of council that Halloween trick-or-treat be celebrated between the hours of 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM on Thursday, October 31st, 2019. Mr. Thompson.
Will we have all three readings of the resolution?
Seconded by Mr. Brayden, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Hannah Hand.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
A resolution declaring it to be the desire of council that Halloween trick-or-treat be celebrated between the hours of 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM on Thursday, October 31st, 2019. A resolution declaring it to be the desire of council that Halloween trick-or-treat be celebrated between the hours of 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM on Thursday, October 31st, 2019. A resolution declaring it to be the desire of council that Halloween trick-or-treat be celebrated between the hours of 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM on Thursday, October 31st, 2019.
Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the resolution be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Hannah Hand.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no administration reports. We do have one request to address council, and that is John and Elise Capella. You want to please come forward? And if you will give us your name and address, then you'll have five minutes to address council. If you'll speak into the microphone, that's helpful.
Sure.
So people can hear you at home.
My name is John Capella. This is my wife, Elise Capella. We live at 4149 Forest Avenue. We just wanted to take the opportunity to update everyone on the Gym of the Highlands 5K, which will be this year on Saturday, November 2nd. I am going to just give a brief recap of this year, and then my wife will talk about what our plans are for this year. But last year was our first inaugural race. As you might know, it was a bitterly cold day for anyone that showed up. We've moved it up a week and a little bit later in the day. But we exceeded all of our expectations. We had nearly 400 participants and raised nearly $10,000 that we have donated back into the Norwood community mainly through park improvements. About $2,000 of that was spent to improve Norwood parks with some mulch and other supplies in a spring polish-the-gym park cleanup day. And then the largest part of our funds was $7,500 that was, we partnered with ASAP Norwood, Substance Abuse Prevention Program here in Norwood. And they were able to get matching funds through Interact for Health, which led to a $15,000 donation, which will lead to the reinstallation of the basketball hoops at Waterworks Park. So we are excited about this year and hoping to improve upon what we did last year.
So I'll add to that, that in addition to the participant expectations from last year being exceeded, our sponsorship goals were also exceeded, and we are excited that we're trending on the same path this year. So our goal is to raise the same amount of sponsorships, but double our participation. So lofty goal of getting 800 participants, which requires everyone that signed up to recruit a friend and to tell everybody. But there's a few ways that people can get involved. It is a very family-friendly event, so walkers, dogs, strollers, kids are all encouraged. We have a family four special price this year that gives a little bit of a break to those of you that are going to sign up, your entire family. But donations are also accepted, so if you're going to make an individual donation, you can do that through our website at norwoodrun.com. Just pretend like you're going to sign up and then indicate you'd rather donate instead. We also need a boatload of volunteers. In addition to the 5K, we'll have a post-race block party that we've taken on the logistics of ourself this year. We were grateful for Off Pike Markets' help last year, but we're going to create our own block party this year, and we couldn't be more pleased with the support that we're getting from the local community on that as well. We have lots of local businesses that are actually going to donate items for those that are signed up for the race, including beverages and free food, and we'll have games. So we think there's a lot for everybody that lives in Norwood, and we also think there's a lot for anyone that doesn't live in Norwood to show off our wonderful community. Did I miss anything? I would say Paycor stepped up this year to be our title sponsor last year. The police and fire associations were awesome and got us off the ground, but Paycor did it with no hesitation. They're also actively recruiting volunteers for us and promoting the race. And Bob Coughlin, who's now their board chairman, is actually going to match whatever we donate back to the parks, 25 cents on the dollar personally. So we're very, very thankful for Paycor. The Urology Group returned as another large corporate sponsor. The police and fire are involved again. Some of our other nonprofits have made donations, so we're just really pleased with the participation across the board from community, or businesses, residents, and all of those of you that want to participate. So we look forward to seeing you. We have proclaimed that it will be the first Saturday of every year, so you may see some yard signs. It'll be easy to remember. We plan for this to be an annual tradition, so.
Very nice.
And it's also the last weekend before Election Day, so I know that's an important weekend for many of you throughout the community, so we would urge you to register and be there with us.
It's a 9:00 AM.
9:00 AM, sorry.
9:00 AM start with the block party immediately following. The start and finish will be at Floral and Smith, where it was last year.
And can you basically give us what the route is, sort of?
Off the top of my head, it stays in the presidential district in South Norwood, and basically has the same start and finish right there.
Flat.
There's a hill off of Catherine, but yeah, it's not too long. So it's doable.
We heard great feedback on the route last year from people in Norwood, and especially, I think both the winners were not Norwood residents, and they loved the route. They said it was one of their favorite local routes that they've done, so.
Agreed.
And I think we went into this hoping to raise a lot of money. I think the thing that we found most exciting about it is I think we created an event where everybody can be proud of something that's happening in Norwood that we're really happy with.
20 years and 40 pounds ago, I would have raced it, but I'm walking it this year.
We're happy to have it.
Used to be a racer, but not anymore. Great. Thank you so much. Look forward to it. Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. Any unfinished business? None? Okay, how about new business? Mrs. Harrigan.
Thank you, Madam President. A few months ago, we all received a letter from ODOT concerning some bridges, and I believe you were going to look into our overpasses and who owns what. I know we signed a resolution, or we passed a resolution last year, and I didn't have time to pull it out to remember exactly what it said, but I think it was for ODOT to look at these bridges. Can you tell us who owns what part of the bridges and who's responsible for what? Or the overpasses, I'm sorry.
The emails that we all got in the mail?
Yes.
Yeah, when I got the email, as you all did, from the Ohio Department of Transportation, I contacted the, and I don't recall the gentleman's name now. I did look up the resolution because I thought, well, we already passed the resolution to do that. But that was allowing the Ohio Department of Transportation to do the work on the Section Avenue Bridge. And those bridges that are in Norwood, but that they are responsible for. So I did contact the Ohio Department of Transportation, that gentleman, and he ended up calling me back a few days later. What he told me was there were two bridges in question. One was the Section Avenue Overpass, and the second was Wesley Avenue. So the Section Avenue Bridge, or the overpass, my understanding is that the first part of that bridge belongs to Norwood because that part of the bridge was there to go over the railroad tracks before Norwood Lateral was ever put in. And so that portion of the Section Avenue Bridge, Norwood is totally responsible for. Then there's another part of that section, of that overpass that goes over 562, that the Ohio Department of Transportation built, and they are responsible for both major and minimum repairs, or major repairs on that. We're responsible for minimum repairs. My understanding that the issue with that is where the two portions of the overpass meet, that there's where the expansion joints are, there's a gap, and that is, we need to address that because it's on our portion of the bridge, of the overpass. The second one on Wesley Avenue, the Ohio Department of Transportation is responsible for all major repairs on that bridge, but the gentleman told me that they considered what is wrong with that to be minor. They won't be addressing any major repairs, but we need to address the minor repair, and that was that there's concrete that is coming away from the rebar underneath the bridge, and the fear is that the concrete will fall off. So he said, well, that was, wouldn't require a lot of work. I mean, it would, you would have to close traffic, and then he suggested that we should just knock, you know, get the concrete off of the rebar, and that would, it would suffice. I did relay that information to the mayor in my conversation with him Sunday at church, or that's when we do all of our conversing. He told me that Mr. Gears is aware of it, and he is looking into it. And they were going to have Ford Development Company come to take a look at that, so that's the last I've heard. So they are aware of it. And I think that he sent it to us because there was, there hadn't been any communication. I think the city had been notified a little bit earlier, and he just hadn't heard anything back, so he reached out to everybody on council. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yeah, I was going to say, thank you, Madam President. I also had reached out to him when we had gotten that email and had found out, like basically got copies of the letters that the city's been sent for the past five years, so starting in 2015 on to 2019, that there's been letters sent. And they escalate in like wording. So like the first year, they're just like, hey, you need to take care of this, this is an issue. And then every year, they're like, just saying this is an issue and a liability. And then like, then they're sending pictures, and so essentially, I think they came to council, like sent it to council because they just weren't getting responded to. There is, well, depending on where they get it from, but money should not be an issue here. If there's an emergency like this where they need to fund it, one, there's appropriations and various keys that I think could be used, and if not, the state auditors can always approve an emergency expense if they have it and have the cost of it. But it's kind of embarrassing to me to, you know, to even be talking about this because, for us as a city, because, you know, what if a piece of concrete or something fell off and like, as a car was going down 60 miles an hour? I mean, you know, we've all seen probably stories in the news where a kid wasn't thinking and threw a rock down and killed somebody on the highway. I mean, I think it happened in Michigan last year, and it's happened before. And so for a piece of concrete that potentially could fall and hit somebody, I don't know. I think it's pretty ridiculous, and I do hope the city administration takes care of this quickly.
And that was the concern that was expressed to me. While that was the most minor, the thing that cost the least, it was the thing that was the most immediate, so. And I did share that with the administration, and consequently was told that they are working on it, and I will follow up tomorrow, and I will let, I'll send out an email and let you all know.
Thank you.
Will do. Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Madam President. So speaking of Section Avenue, I spotted road crew working on the corner of Section and Ross.
Saw that.
And cutting in a handicapped corner, so it looks like there's some action going on there, so hopefully, hopefully that that project will start. I'm not sure if they can do that during the cold months, but hopefully that's the start of Section Avenue, and we'll see that here in the coming days.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Any other new business? Mrs. Hannah Hand.
Thank you, Madam President. I myself have some good news tonight. It's always fun to do good news. As many of you know, Burwood Park has been a project of mine for some time. We've talked about funding on council here. I put it in my newsletter. I've been working with quite a few parents over there, and I'm happy to tell everybody that the requisition for new playground equipment has been approved. It appeared, what we're looking at is a grip-and-spin, an Aztec climber, a extra-large playground system, and then a smaller playground system for the littler kids. I really want to thank Mayor Williams and the Safety Service Director, Joe Gears, for helping make this happen. This has been a long, you know, a long time coming. I've been working on this for a while. Mark Reeves was kind enough to come down and help me measure. I had measured 10 times and never could get it right, and he came and helped. And so I'm really excited about this, and the, we really need to thank the Norwood Fire Association. They have offered to assist in all the installation. The company that this will come from has agreed, or will expedite shipping at no extra charge, so depending on the schedule of the fire association and our weather coming up, it's not out of the question, we can get some of this stuff done by the end of the year. I think this should make many people happy, as Burwood Park has play equipment that was there when I was a little kid, and it was really needed.
Not so many years ago.
It was only 10 years ago. 12, 10, 12, 12, 10 years ago. So anyway, I wanted to give that good news and hope everybody's excited about it. And when it comes down, if anybody would like to volunteer when the time comes to do work, you can contact me at, on my email, handwherehand@norwoodohio.gov. And hopefully, we can have some of this taken care of by the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hannah Hand. Any other, Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a follow-up to Mrs. Hannah Hand. So that's excellent news for the people that use Burwood Park, because I get that complaint quite a bit, that there's going to be new equipment. Has, I was just curious, has the order been completed at this point, or is it, what's the status of it, I guess?
The status is I need to speak with the fire association, and I'm hoping to do that within the next day or so, to see what their schedule looks like and when they're going to be available.
Yes, Mr. Bonzel.
Okay, excellent. And so I guess the fire says, do they, I remember when we did the playground build for Northwoods Park, there were two people that we had there that were like professional playground installers that could help coordinate the work and make sure it was done right. But then all the volunteers, of course, helped to kind of move the supplies and materials and everything else. Is there going to be something similar for this playground build?
Mrs. Hannah Hand.
Yes, we, in the purchase order, the installation is also in that, so they're going to be working together to have installers from the company, and then it will be from Norwood also.
Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam President. I guess the last thing that I would encourage is that there is this event going on at Burwood Park on Sunday, although it got, it's supposed to be last Sunday, it got delayed due to rain. I think if you have some pictures that, you know, you could show people, or maybe go down and talk to people, I think it would be a very good thing, because there's so many residents that really want to see improvements there, and I think honestly, like, there's a lot of, to show them that there's going to be some improvements that are going to be made, I think a lot of people would be very pleased to see that.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Mrs. Hannah Hand.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I know they had a meeting last week. I am not on the Facebook pages. I didn't know about it until you told me about it. I did drive down for last week, and nobody was there. It was, it had been canceled. This week, I have a commitment, but I do have a banner going up showing the play equipment, and it has my contact information. And if they were doing, you know, from now on, I mean, I would like to just say, if something's going on like that, you need to contact council. We don't automatically see these things on Facebook if they're wanting us to be involved and to work with them. Because like I said, I am not on the Facebook pages, and everybody isn't. So the only reason I even knew about it was after talking with you. But this week, I am committed, and there's no way I can get out of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hannah Hand. Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Madam President. Congratulations, Mrs. Hannah Hand. That's great news for Burwood Park. So I'd like to know what's going on at Burwood, and also, I'd like to be the first to volunteer for any types of, whatever you need at all, I'd like to be, like to help out, so, or one of the first volunteers. So congratulations, great job.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Any other new business? Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam President. So there are, this is going to be a very event-packed weekend in Norwood. Some, you know, I would say somber, and some good events as well. I guess the first thing is, I don't know if we should acknowledge the, at the high school where they're going to have, on Saturday morning, they're going to have a, or is it a high school?
It's not at the high school, it's Norwood Middle School.
Excuse me.
Norwood Middle School from, at 10 o'clock, there will be a celebration of life for Dr. Sabo.
Yes, so I think that the community is invited if they want to come, so I would just encourage people to keep that in mind. The event that Mr. Brayden was, that I was referring to, Mr. Brayden asked about, is called Dream Big in Burwood Park, and so it's hosted, it looks like by Kate Wessel and Militia Locke. Essentially, this event, they're going to have like just various activities for kids there. It'll be Sunday at 4 o'clock, I think, 4 to 6. They'll have activities for kids, they're looking to solicit ideas on like things that can happen in the future, and basically just kind of having a neighborhood get-together for anybody that wants to come. It looks like they're going to do pumpkin painting and other things, so I think it'll be a fun event. I know, I wish, if my kid were older, I would definitely be having him paint pumpkins there, but being a six-month-old, he's not perfect. But anyways, it'll be exciting for people to be there, 4 to 6, Sunday at Burwood Park.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Any other new business? Mr. Bonzel.
Sorry, thank you, Madam President. So just two more things, if I can. The next one's the Norwood Historic Home Tour that's happening on Saturday. I forgot the exact time, I think it's 3 to 5. But there's, they'll be having that, and then the, there'll be a block party guess afterwards, so there'll be an after-party for the Historic Home Tour. So keep that in mind. The tickets, right now, there's a flash sale for the Norwood Historic Home Tour. It's like 1 for 10 or 2 for 15, so they did that same flash sale around Labor Day, and they kind of brought it back here right before the event. So one of the cool things about the event is that the, that beautiful white house, if you're driving down Floral, you know, before you turn right, before it turns right, is going to be part of the event. So a wonderful couple bought the house and put a lot of money into updating it and bringing back its former glory. So that'll be a part of the tour, along with many other houses, so hopefully, people can attend.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel.
And then.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the last thing, okay, so this weekend is also Blink in downtown Cincinnati. So Blink is like this, they did it two years ago, they're doing it again this year, but it's just this really amazing light show that's going to happen Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And last time, last year, I remember going down two nights, but they had a million people over the four nights go to downtown Cincinnati, so it was just crazy, it was awesome, it was fun, so many people, it felt like, like it felt like you were in New York City, it was really cool. This year, though, they've learned from that, and they're doing a lot more blocking off of streets, so it is not going to be as easy for people to get in and drive there as it of streets, so it is not going to be as easy for people to get in and drive there as it might have been two years ago. So what they're really doing now is they're encouraging people to take public transportation to Blink. And so Norwood is blessed by having, you know, three bus lines that go through Norwood. One of them, the four, will pick you up all throughout, down Montgomery Road essentially, and get on the four, and basically, they're going to use the Riverfront Transit Center for the staging area for the buses. So instead of getting dropped off and picked up all around downtown, all the buses are going to basically just bypass all those stops once it gets downtown and go straight to the Riverfront Transit Center. So it'll be kind of exciting to you, it's at Second Street, so basically it'll drop you off, there'll be all kinds of people and volunteers in the transit center to help people navigate, and then once you're ready to leave, you just come back to the transit center, and they take you right back to Norwood. So I would really highly encourage people to use the public transit because it's there for a reason, and it's $1.75 each way, and you can download an app called Cincy Easy Ride, and you can just pay for it on your phone. But my wife and I are going to go Friday, and we're going to take the bus down, so it should be a really great opportunity, one, for people to use the bus that may not have a reason to use it in the past, and then two, just to really enjoy a wonderful event in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzow. Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'm going to go back and respond to the Burwood Park if I could, because I'm not going to be there, and I'm not able to attend. And I'm hoping several of the parents or the families that I have worked with will be there and express some of their opinions, because I know they're going to talk about some of the ideas for the park. And I'd just like to throw out, I first, when I met with some of the people, one of the persons, people sent me an email saying they wanted to partner with me to get funding to fill the pool at Burwood Park. And I would like to just give my opinion on a few things here, since it's been talked about. I would hate to see Burwood Park filled. The parents I've been working with, we would, and I hope they express this, would like to see the pool reopened as a pool or a water park. Also, for the pool deck to be taken back through the area that needs to be leveled with a shelter so that people who are at the water park or the pool would be able to picnic. And we get around and call, or not get around, we called it Phase 2. So those are just some of the ideas I would, you know, I would like to get out there and see that are brought up at this event that they're having. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Any other new business? Mr. Sankar.
Do you want to maybe mention the tire and freon drop-off and removal this Saturday and Sunday down at Public Works? They'll take appliances that typically would need to freon-removed refrigerators, air conditioners and such. They'll take them down, you can take them to Public Works at no charge. Same way with old tires. If you have tires that you really can't dispose of through, just throwing them in the trash, they'll take those old tires and add down to Public Works also this Saturday and Sunday. Not sure, hours, like mid-morning to early afternoon.
Say it's a 10 to 2 maybe?
Yeah, so, but, you know, but that is going on this weekend as well, so, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. Any other new business? We'll move on to communications. The first is a letter from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding Aftermath Bar and Grill. It's a transfer of a license from John and Betty Edwards DBA Old Luchas Cafe to Aftermath Bar and Grill LLC. The clerk of council secretary did send out an email to all of the appropriate departments, and to my understanding, the only, the only response we have is from the Health Department who had no objection and said that they had a very limited food license already, so no other objections were heard from. Any responses have to be postmarked by the 18th, so. What's your pleasure on this? Mr. Breeden.
I would like to make a, that the communications be received and filed.
Second, seconded by Mr. Thompson. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzow.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye of the motion carries. Next is a letter from Kelly Brown regarding September financials.
Dear council members, this letter is to let you know that the September monthly financial reports were emailed to each council member on October 2nd. If you have not received said email, please let me know so that I can verify your email address and also get you a copy of the reports. Sincerely, Kelly Brown, Account Clerk, Auditor's Office.
Mr. Thompson.
Move to receive and file the letter.
Seconded by Mr. Breeden. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzow.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye of the motion carries. We do have one absent member. Mr. Bonzow.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we excuse the absent member.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzow.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye of the motion carries. Mr. Bonzow.
Thank you, Madam President. Before we adjourn, we had made a motion at the last meeting to defer consideration of override of the veto for one of the resolution, for the resolution that the mayor vetoed regarding six-month management of our water system by Greater Cincinnati Waterworks. I would like to make a motion to revive consideration of it at our next regularly scheduled council meeting.
You said that should have been done under unfinished business.
Sorry, yeah, I apologize about that. But at our next council meeting, so that would be October 22nd. If we could just add it to the agenda, so that'd be my motion.
Will you put that on the agenda under unfinished business?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Bonzow.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd move that we adjourn.
Seconded by Mr. Breeden. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzow.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye of the motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.